Like to call to order the Assembly Public Safety Committee meeting. It is Wednesday, March 3rd at 11:10 a.m. Let's start with a roll call, please.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Perez Verdia?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. Constant?
Here.
Mr. Dunbar? Ms. Zalatell? Mr. Rivera?
Present.
Mr. Weddleton?
Here.
Ms. Allard?
Here.
Ms. LaFrance?
Here.
Thank you, Chairs.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. We have a full agenda today, so we'll we'll try to move right in into it, so we can have time for all the different parts of our discussion. Just want to check with my co-chair before we get started. Crystal, anything to add before we get started?
I don't believe so. Like you said, we have a pretty full agenda, so thank you.
Yeah, sure. Okay, great. Well, let's jump right in with our updates. Let's start with the Anchorage Police Department. Chief, are you going to do an update for us?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I actually am gonna, this is Justin, I'm gonna introduce Lieutenant Jack Carson, who is the Violent Crimes Unit Commander in our Detective Division. He has the homicide unit and the robbery assault unit and the cold case unit, and he's going to give a brief update on sort of the status of our cold case unit after they've been up and running for a year or so. Lieutenant Carson, take it away.
Thank you, sir. If you guys are okay with it, I'm gonna go ahead and share a PowerPoint with you guys. Hopefully successfully.
That would be great.
There. Are you guys seeing that?
Yep, we got it, Jack. Go ahead.
So I'd like to start out thanking you for having me present today. You know, this is exciting times for us. Obviously, our unit's been up for about a year. It's, things are finally starting to come together for us. So I was gonna briefly cover the cold case unit. We, I did that a while back. I know most of you guys were here for that, but for those that weren't, I was gonna kind of brief over for some of the things and really focus today on the missing persons part of the cold case unit, where last time we focused on the homicide side of it. It should only take about seven to 10 minutes, and then so there should be plenty of time afterwards for questions if anybody has questions. When we created the unit or stood up the unit, we kind of looked at what Alaska State Troopers were doing, what IACP, which is the International Associations of the Chiefs of Police, kind of some of their recommendations when we're creating our policies, procedures, and kind of how to run the unit. And that's kind of the guidelines that we followed as we were setting it up and created the unit. So with that, we have four people in the unit. It's Detective Brett Sarber, Detective Gary Curtis, Sergeant Bianca Cross, and myself. Between all of us, we have about 70 years of police experience. As you can see, for such a small unit, there's a lot of experience in the unit, and that's really important for a unit like this, that is kind of following up after other detectives and trying to look for, you know, advances in technology that can help us, maybe some mistakes, things that weren't followed up on, and trying to follow up on these cases to bring them to closure for the family. As we covered last time, right now, we have about 125 unsolved homicides in Anchorage. Along with that, as of yesterday, we have about 171 missing persons. Out of those 171, only about 30 of them are cold cases, which will define here a second, but in short, it's three years or more that they've been missing. Now, not all those missing people are actually, you know, presumed dead or anything like that. You know, we just found one the other day that had been missing for some time. We actually, she had moved out of state, and she was living out of state and had no idea that she'd been reported missing. So other ones we have where we suspected suicide or suspected suicide and stuff, their vehicles were found out by, like, Beluga Point. They have evidence that suggests that maybe they had went off, but without a body, we're unable to actually classify it as a suicide, so it kind of stays in the missing persons. But also along in that missing person numbers is people that we believe may have been killed or a victim of homicide, and we are, they're assigned to detectives. We're investigating them like homicides, but until we actually have the body or more information, we're not able to actually change the case over reclassified as a homicide. So there's a big mixture of what's in that total number of 171. Kind of a cold case definition, for those that weren't here last time, is unsolved murders, sex assaults, long-term missing persons cases. No activity for three years, and that's real important to make it a cold case, and are all leads exhausted. So we may have cases that are three years or more old since the actual crime is committed, but the detective, the original detective is still here and kind of following up on it, and, you know, they generally have the most knowledge about the case. So we like to leave it with with that detective as other leads come in. And/or the victim died one year or more after the original event. So an example of that would be, they, you know, they survived, but they had significant health issues and then died later. That would be considered a cold case by our definition. Some of the strategies that we use is really the public. You know, there's a lot of times there's people out there that didn't come forward the first time. It kind of tried putting them behind them, but if it comes to their attention again, you know, they may have had life changes. They may have been involved in high-risk activities when they were younger, but have since moved on, and would talk to someone today even though they didn't then. So using things like NICSO alerts, press attention, releasing new information, and also utilizing Crime Stoppers. So these, we don't just automatically put out everything, obviously, when we are looking at these cases. We're looking for the right case to do that, because we don't, we obviously don't want to show our cards or release information we're not supposed to release, but all those tools and the public's help are super important to us. You know, just by standing up the cold case unit, we have a lot of people reaching out to us about old cold cases and talking to us and seeing if we know that information, you know, that we're still aware of some of the information that they had shared back then and/or given us some new information. We're also re-interview witnesses. We're finding they're a lot more willing to talk to us now and are giving us a lot more information. We're going back and reaching out to a lot of these witnesses. And also case review, you know, as a homicide detective, like 2017 is a good example. We had a record number of homicides come in that year, and the detectives were really overwhelmed. They had so many cases, by the time they could really get their feet dug in and start digging into a case, they were having to move on to another one, and then coming back and refollowing those cases, some of them sometimes didn't happen as good as it should have. So with these detectives, they're assigned a case, and once they're assigned a case, they get to finish that case. We aren't pushing them to move on to other cases. We want them to finish that case and make sure absolutely nothing else can be done with that case before we're assigning them new cases and trying to have them follow up on those. So they really get to put 100% effort into that case while it's happening. This is, so some of the changes that have come out of creating a cold case unit, it's really made us look on how we're doing things and how can we do it better. And one of the, one of the things that we've looked at, you know, specifically for missing persons is a regular review of the numbers. No one was really tracking those numbers before, about probably two years ago, where they kind of were keeping, you know, keeping an eye on it, but not really looking at each individual case and looking if there's anything that can be followed up on. Is there anything that's suspicious? Anybody we can talk to? Things like that. And that's what's being done much better now. We're doing that through a relationship with like the Missing Persons Clearinghouse has been really important to us, Missing Murder Indigenous People, the ME's office, trying to identify some remains they have there. And a prime example of that is, you know, as an assembly, you guys have all heard some of the problems we have with our computer system. Just two days ago, for this, I tried pulling the numbers of how many missing people we have, and our system pulls up 101 people, and there's names that we know are missing or not on there. And so it's that work with Missing Persons Clearinghouse in Millie over there that allows us to get a much more accurate number and get to that 170. So we got better tracking and follow-up now with our relationships that we're reaching out instead of trying to do it all internal like we were in the past. And also in public engagement by social media and stuff, that's a new tool for us as the Anchorage Police Department in the last decade, and it's really a useful tool for getting out there. So what's really helped us do in reference, missing people, is the increase in the accounting of those missing people. We're able to identify the ones that are missing long-term and/or something is suspicious about their disappearance, and that's allowing us to faster identify people who may have been a victim of a crime. And once we identify that, we assign them to a detective. Those are assigned to a homicide detective, so they're treated much the same as a homicide, even though they're classified as a missing person. It's actually the homicide detectives and their experience and resources available to them are the ones actually following up on that. You know, as we talked last time, kind of about the setup and the troubles and things, some of the advantages and troubles of running a cold case unit, and the difficulties, but right now, with all that, you're starting to see a lot of the benefits come through. I'm excited to say that I think there will be some good news here in the next coming months, of some of these cases coming fruition and some closure for some families. So we're still in the works on some of that, but we got some exciting things happening right now. And I, like I said, I can't give details on it, but I, we're really gonna start seeing the benefit of this, this new unit here, here in the next few months, so. Is there any questions or anything anybody has?
And I'll just say, I didn't remind everyone in the beginning that if you do have questions, go ahead and post them in the chat. And I see a question from Mr. Constant. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Jack, when, back on your slide in which you defined what is a cold case, I didn't quite grasp what the third one was, which was something about someone having died a year after an incident?
Yes, if, so if someone, say someone got shot today, and their injuries are real serious, but they were able to live, that would not be classified as a homicide. But say because of complications, they needed multiple surgeries throughout the year, and say they, they died because of those complications a year or two later, but it's from the initial shooting, that still can be considered a homicide, and it's talking about those cases. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, in my mind, and I'm obviously not an officer, that wouldn't be a cold case. That would be like when that was determined it was a new case, but thank you. That helps me understand.
Okay, thanks, sir.
All right. I don't see any other questions. I have a couple of questions. You had talked about that you, we potentially are gonna see some good news coming out. Can you talk to us a little bit about what, what data you sort of use to measure the the accomplishments of this particular department? Like, what would be the metrics that you would use to demonstrate that it is either effective or not, and year to year, month to month, however that's done? So what are those sort of metrics is my first question. And the second question is, I'm curious about the number of cases. You put some numbers up there, but sort of the number of cases and how that relates to the number of staffing. So, you know, what's your thought about, you know, what's the proper amount of staffing for the amount of cases we have here? And how does that compare to other, to other cities? And are we, you know, staffed correctly for the amount of cases that we have? So.
Hey, this is Justin. I'd be happy to jump in there and answer some of those. So I think when you, I'm gonna go backwards and talk about staffing first. I think when you look at staffing, what, I mean, honestly, the way that we started was we have been increasing the number of officers at APD for quite some time, and we were looking at things that we hadn't previously been able to do. And cold case unit was one of them. You know, when I was a lieutenant in, I had Jack's job back in 2015. That was an area that I really wanted to focus on, and the department just didn't have the resources. So we finally got to a point where we thought that we could reasonably commit two full-time detectives to this. And I think, you know, we were excited to do that, but it was, it honestly wasn't based on a certain case-to-detective ratio or anything like that. We knew that a pair of detectives working together as a team would be the most effective work unit, and we wanted them to start going through all the cases. Sergeant Cross, who's in charge of that unit, had actually spent a lot of time sort of putting all of the cases into, in order, because some of them are really, really old. So it wasn't really so much of a mathematical calculation as what did we think would be the most effective sort of work unit size that we could commit to it right now, and that's why we went with two. You know, there are a lot of cases. Some of them are really old. They go back quite a ways, and they're really difficult cases, as Lieutenant Carson has highlighted. There's, you know, people, some people are no, have passed away, people have moved out of state, you know. If you have a homicide case, it can be, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of pages of information, and the detective becoming familiar with it has to go through all of that information, like, starting over again. So it takes a long time to kind of get caught up. As far as metrics go, I mean, obviously, we want to see successful case resolutions come out of that unit, but really what we're looking at on, on a periodic basis, as Lieutenant Carson and Sergeant Cross kind of monitor the unit's progress is, you know, how many cases have they been able to go through? What kind of information have they been able to sort of organize? And again, I just want to point out the difficulty of this nature of case where a detective has to basically almost start over again and go through all the information and organize it and try to locate people. So I know that both Lieutenant Carson and Sergeant Cross are actively monitoring the progress of the unit. We all want to see a real success with a case resolution come out of the unit, and I would, I would love to be able to talk about that more, but obviously, we just can't talk about ongoing cases. So that's probably as much detail as I can give.
Okay, thanks. And so just as a follow-up, the, as we're, as we're looking at this department, you know, at growth, that sort of thing, some of the information that we can expect coming from, from you guys are, you know, number of case resolutions, number of cases. And then there sounds like that there's something in there in terms of sort of a case that's not necessarily resolved, but new information that has been developed, not that you're gonna share that information, but just sort of a metric that shows that there's progress being made. So I'm just asking that so that we can look at how to properly monitor the, the, the success of that, of that, that work.
Yeah, no, I, I assure you that if we have a case come to full resolution, we will be telling everybody.
That's great. That's great. Thanks. Thanks, Jack, and thanks to Justin so much for that. Chief, anything else you want to add in terms of APD updates before we move on?
No, sir. I know that you guys have a lot to go over, so I will keep it short. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. And I don't see any additional questions in the queue, so we're gonna move on to the Anchorage Fire Department. And there is a number of updates that are gonna come there. And Chief, are you on to give that update? Looks like you're there, yeah.
Hi, I'm. Good morning, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to provide an update for where we're at with them. I think we have a pretty good list today, so I'm gonna start with our Mobile Integrated Health Program, which is where the Mobile Crisis Response Team will be housed. Once we received budget or authorized by the 2021 budget, we put a working group together to start the implementation plan for putting the crisis team into service. The working group meets on a regular basis once a week to tackle all of the tasks that putting a new service into place entails. The very first thing that we looked at was staffing. We had proposed eight positions, and of course, you never know exactly what those position titles will be and exactly the work that we'll be responsible for. And working with the Human Resources Section and on classifying and getting approvals on those has been quite a bit of work, as you're probably all aware, it takes a while to make that stuff happen. We submitted the first round in December and got the last of them submitted in early January. Right now, two have been complete and are ready to go. We're waiting for the other six, but we know we're close. I believe we're meeting today with HR on the final drafts, so hopefully they'll come out fairly soon. The minute that those are completed, then we'll work with HR to post the positions and get them filled. We anticipate that process will take anywhere from 30 to 60 days, depending on the position and who we select for those positions. Some will all need to give, you know, many people can just do two weeks' notice, but for people, especially mental health clinicians and people working in very technical environments, typically, they like to give their employer a little bit more heads up that they'll be leaving the organization. The other things we're working on, office space, we had, we were very hopeful that we would be able to use the old Government Hill Fire Station, known as Station Two, as headquarters for the response team. Unfortunately, as we've looked at it with maintenance and operations, it will need some significant remodel, repairs, and updates. The building hasn't been touched since the 80s. I believe it was originally built in the 60s. There's probably asbestos. There's plumbing issues. Electrical needs to be updone. It'll have to be updated to the latest codes. So we're probably talking a significant expense, close to anywhere from $300,000 to $500,000 for that. We don't have that funding right now, so we're trying to evaluate, do we make that investment? How can we make that investment? Or would it be more efficient to find another space? That is not going to stop with the implementation of the team. What we're looking at right now is to house them in our training center on airport heights to start out with and give them that space and keep them there until we come up with a more permanent solution. So that is in process. The vehicles for the team are in the procurement process, as are computers, uniforms, phones, all of the hard items that you need to actually have a functioning service. We are also in the midst of the policy and procedure development. One, we have to add how the team works with current assets, and the team will need their own policies, procedures, and guidelines for how they're gonna operate. So all of that is happening. That includes the dispatch criteria and instructions. So all of that is, we have separate work groups. We're working on all of that, and they're working through the, we have some drafts, and we're working on the approval process. I have to say huge thanks to Steph Colston for her help with the Medicaid 1115 waiver. We are working with the state office to be a qualified, basically, entity for the 1115 waivers. The state has been very helpful to help us get there. We are in that process. We got notification from them today. They have some more questions for us, so we're providing that information as soon as we possibly can. And the last one, it comes to the crisis response team, is development of a training plan. The working group have identified appropriate training for the members of the team and a training plan for them as they come on. What training do we have to do before we can put the team in service? So that is in, pretty close to complete, and we're also including a training on de-escalation that will happen for the entire department. We talk about that a lot, and we already, you know, provide some of that training, but now there are some national curriculums out there for fire and EMS responders that we're looking at, and we'll include that several out with the team. So I think that's it for Mobile Crisis Response Team. If anyone has any questions, I'll pause for a minute before we move on.
Doesn't look like we have any questions yet in the queue for that.
Good, glad to hear. The second topic was, it's actually kind of two topics. The EMS equipment, we asked the voters to authorize Anchorage Fire Department an incremental increase so that we could fund our EMS replacement plan. So we did that, and fortunately, the community agreed with us in 2020, and we were able to put that into place. We finalized the contract with the vendor by June of 2020. The equipment all arrived in September, and it was several tractor-trailer, I think we had two tractor-trailer loads of equipment. It was fantastic to see. We incorporated all of that stock into our inventory management system and verified that we got everything we asked for, and then we rolled it out to Anchorage Fire Department, Chugak Volunteer Fire Department, and Girdwood Fire Department. This is all area-wide EMS equipment, and so I believe the last piece of it was installing the power load gurneys in all of our frontline ambulances, and that was completed by November. So all of that equipment has been put in service and is being used by the community or, you know, by our responders as they serve the community right now. That is amazing. Especially in the midst of the pandemic, we were able to implement this complete change-out of EMS equipment, and our staff were significantly elated to see the new equipment and know that everybody was working with consistent stuff. And I think I'll speak for Chief Weston from Girdwood and Chief Benningfield from Chugak. They were very thankful as well. So this is great for the community to support us in this way. The other part of the question, or that topic focuses on the bond. We have two bond packages in 2020. One was for 1.4 for ambulances, and we, that allowed us to finish our build-out of our new ambulances, so we're getting four that should arrive in late July, and those will replace all of our basic life support ambulances at Station 1, Station 4, and Station 14. So those four will be coming by late July, and this is, we finally started our re-boxing program, which is we take an ambulance that we have purchased, and we're happy with what the box looks like, which is where we do all of our work in the back of the ambulance, and we send it to the vendor. The vendor takes the box off and puts a new chassis on it, because we run the wheels off of these vehicles. So basically, for about half the price of the new ambulance, we get a virtually new ambulance, all cleaned, refreshed, and ready to run the wheels off again. So we have two of those coming. That will be Medic 4 and Medic 1, and they should arrive in May of '21. So we're, this, by the end of the summer, we'll have six new ambulances on the road, which will be great. And the last thing for the bond piece is, in 2020, we were approved for 1.4 million for a new ladder truck replacement, and that project is in process as well. It takes about a year, anywhere from 10 to 12 months to build an aerial apparatus. And that contract was awarded to Rosenbauer America out of Minnesota. We have other Rosenbauer apparatuses that we've been very happy with. It definitely was a competitive process, and they brought us the best package. And this, right now, that apparatus is scheduled to replace Truck 3 at Station 3 in Offa Braga. So I think that one, and we will, so we'll probably see it by, we're guessing, maybe next spring of '22 will probably be when that happens. And as you'll see on the bonds for 2021, we're requesting another ladder truck, which will be the replacement for Truck 5, which we actually had to take out of service due to significant maintenance issues that could, were not cost-effective to fix. So that, that, the one funded in 2021 will go to Station 5, I believe is the plan right now. Okay, and the very last thing, I think we have, oh, I actually have two last things. Staffing, we, this is huge retirement. Oh, go ahead.
If you could pause for just a second. I've got a question from Pete, and then there was also a question posted, but I'll go ahead and let Pete go first, and then I'll ask the question that was posted. Go ahead, Pete.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I was just wondering, are there any changes to the interior design of the ambulances to, you know, to make it easier to handle patients with, with the virus and help protect some of our firefighters? Thanks.
Assemblymember Peterson through the chair. We didn't make any modifications to the actual ambulance for COVID protections. What we did is we changed the practice in the PPE that our employees were wearing. We, over the last about eight years, have worked on a more efficient ambulance design that allows it, makes it easier for us to keep them clean, you know, a lot less nooks and crannies, a lot less hazards inside the compartment space. So we're pretty happy with what the box looks like and how efficiently we can operate in the back of the ambulance. So there won't be any changes, other than, you know, if there's some maintenance, you know, if a piece of trim's coming off, we fix the piece of trim, or if there's equipment loose, they'll take care of those things, but there won't be any modifications. And we didn't really require or see any modifications that were needed to allow us to maintain our infection control policy.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thanks. And then there was a question that was posted related to going back to the Mobile Crisis Team. It was related to a work group and, and the members of that work group. So I guess first, you know, is there a work group? And then the question is, is the members of that work group, are there any citizens on that work group? on that work group? And/or are there any members of the municipal criminal team specifically to assure diversion from jail of people with mental illness?
Assemblymember Perez Verdia, there, this is an internal work group for the implementation of the team, is what we have put together. At this point, there are no citizens involved in that piece of it. Once we have the draft protocols and, you know, policies and guidelines that we'll be operating with, we actually are working on a communication plan to communicate that and share that information with APD, to make sure that none of our policies are in conflict with them. We worked very closely with APD on this project, so that will be an easy communication piece. And we've identified stakeholder groups that we will be communicating, this is our plan, this is what we want to do, to make sure that we answer everyone's questions. So yeah, I will add that to my report in the future, that what the communication plan is, so that you can see that that is, that is definitely something that we're considering and will be part of the implementation process.
Great. And then, and then the second part was around, just in terms of your, your development of this team, and has, has there been communication with our legal department specifically talking about, you know, how we're working with people with mental illness, and how we're working in terms of diversion, keeping them out of jail and getting them into the proper service? Has there ever been discussion about that as well?
That, we're a little bit too early for that, we need to put our policies, procedures together before it goes to the review.
Okay, all right.
But that, that will be part of the process, yes.
Thanks very much. Okay, and then I have a question for Mr. Constant.
Thank you. I think that, Chief, you just really touched on it, that you are going to be working toward, and you know, I've discussed this, the creation of some engagement with community groups, people who have lived experience, not just with the experience of mental illness, but of the impacts we're attempting to mitigate in some parts of town with these services. And so I just want to reiterate here for the conversation of the committee, that the chief has in her plans an effort to do just that, which is to kind of reality test the program, not just by internal eyes of the police department, or the fire department, or even our eyes, but with the eyes of people who experience the issues, whether that be advocates for mental illness, like people who experience mental illness, or neighborhoods who have long suffered under that policy.
Yes.
Thanks. Great. And I don't think there's any other questions, you can continue with your next item.
Okay, staffing is the next thing. 2021 looks like it will be probably our biggest retirement attrition year. So far, we've already had four retirements and three other employees who have left to pursue other lines of work. Our 23 probationary employees who are in the academy are still doing well, graduation is scheduled for April. One thing I know that this committee has been waiting for is data, 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 and we finally filled the position for RMS Specialist, which is our, will provide our data. They start on April, no, sorry, March 8th. So I'm hoping that by the next public safety meeting, we will be able to have our response data for 2020, finally. We also ended up with a vacant fire inspector position, we had someone who left the organization, and we have that filled. And I want to brag on AFD just a little bit, because the city of Palmer has a very experienced building official, fire inspector, person who's well-known in our industry, and we somehow convinced him to come work for us, so we are very happy. I'm sorry for Palmer's loss, but we're happy to have him come aboard, and he will join us in March 22nd. So the only vacancies that we have left at this time to fill are for the mobile crisis response team, and as I mentioned, we're running right through that. The next thing, actually, we'll talk about Girdwood and our new business, but the other thing I wanted to talk about is the document that we asked Miranda to share a few minutes ago. And I'm going to share my screen, because one of the topics that's come up on a regular basis is, why do we want developers to consider fire response when they are developing new subdivisions and expanding old subdivisions? So... Let's see, let's see, this first. Okay, so can everyone see the document that says Hillside Structure Fire Wildfire Response?
Yep, yep, that's it.
So on February 25th, we responded to DeArmond Road, 6200, for a regu, I'm not going to say regular structure fire, but a fairly common occurrence for us, which is a working structure fire. When scenes arrived, or when crews arrived on scene, the structure was almost fully engulfed, and the reason why I wanted to highlight this is the location of that fire. So that fire happened, you can see right where the red dot is, that's where the fire was located. That is a very difficult place for us to get to, and butts right up against our wildland urban interface. The house was built in the eighties, definitely had not fire-wise the property surrounding it at all. So when the crews arrived on scene, it was a, you know, normal, single-family, you know, pretty typical house that we see in the Anchorage area, but it was fully involved. Fortunately, the occupants had evacuated. Our immediate concerns when we got on scene because of involvement were structure collapse and, you know, exposure to the wildland urban interface in the area. If this fire would have happened in April, it would have been a totally different discussion we would be having right now. There's limited water supply in the area. The command immediately declared, it's a defensive strategy, we're going to surround and drown the fire to put it out, because there's no way we could do interior attack. And our biggest concern was extension to surrounding properties. Fortunately, this is a winter fire, you know, in February, in the cold, excuse me, so the cold temperatures and the fact there was snow on the ground protected, helped to protect the surrounding structures. We had to use portable tanks to provide water to the engine that was, or engines that were operating to put the fire out. We were on scene for four hours before we could declare the fire under control, and the crews continued on hot spots, not just in the structure itself, but in the surrounding exposures, for another 14 hours the next day. Of course, here's some of the shots, and I really want to draw everyone's attention to how close the trees are to this structure, and then why that is such a big concern. As you can see, even, you know, we've got, the trees are right up abutting the structure. And again, the only reason why this didn't turn into a potential wildfire conflagration in that area is because it happened in February. The cause, its indications, initial indication for cause of the fire was extension cords going to a space heater that was heating something near the house. There was so much damage that we're not sure if we'll ever get a confirmed cause of the fire, but based on statements from the homeowner, that's what we're indicating. But there were extension cords running to other outbuildings, and so this wasn't necessarily caused by, you know, a winter-related fire, basically. So this could have happened in April, just because of the use of extension cords and the property wasn't fire-wise. So we were, we're never thankful that there's a fire, but sometimes timing is what saves us, and the fact this fire happened in February probably saved the entire neighborhood from burning. Where that fire is located, the closest field site was clear over here at South High School, Station Nine, and it was, you know, kind of smacked out between Station Nine and Station Ten for response. So we had good response and could get there. However, with that wildland urban interface, it easily could have run right up the valley that it, you know, kind of sits in front of, and done significant damage. This is our second fire that we have seen, you know, large fire that we've seen in the last month. Next time, I'm hoping I'll have information to share on the fire up Highland Road. This is why the fire department really stresses residential sprinklers and water supply and access to these homes, is because with that wildland urban interface, timing is everything. And if this fire would have happened in late March, April, or early May, before greenup, or in the fall, in September, October, November, it will significant, has the potential to significantly damage large areas of the community, and that is a very highly populated area with lots of houses. So, one, we really need to promote fire-wise, but two, we need to remind developers and builders that that's why we ask for water, fire water supply. This is why we need good access to houses. This is why we recommend residential sprinklers, because that could really help, not just save that person's house, but also the rest of the community. I, and Miranda did share this, and it is posted on the website. And I think that's all I have under the old business for our update, and I'll wait till to talk about Girdwood when we get there.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief. Do we have any questions? The members, looks like no questions at this time. That's great. I do want to, I know that Sarah Stanley's on, and we don't have anything listed, but I want to make sure there was some space. Sarah, do you have any updates you'd like to provide from the law department?
We are, we just got a new update from the Chief Justice. Misdemeanor trials are now going to start April 19th. Felony trials will be starting June 1st. So we are gearing up, we have a backlog of trial cases, as you can imagine, from the last year of not having trials. So we are getting prepared and bracing ourselves for a busy trial season beginning late April. And other than that, I don't believe I have any other updates.
Great. Let's see, I don't see any questions in the queue for you either, so thanks so much for your, for your, okay. Okay, we're going to move on into our new business and start with Girdwood Fire Volunteer Fire Rescue Contract for EMS Services. Chief, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I'm happy to give another, an update on where we're at. Pull up my notes, make sure I get everything right. We, for, man, probably a year and a half, we've been working with the Girdwood Volunteer Fire Rescue Incorporated, who is the nonprofit which operates the Girdwood Fire Department in, down in the area of Girdwood. We had a very old contract that needed to be updated, so we have been in that process, and I am pleased to say that we are close to the end. The very last step was working with them and negotiating with them on a funding increase. They did provide that, I think we've come to agreement on the, on a potential funding increase, so you will see it in first quarter budget revisions, an increase of $300,000. They'll go to Girdwood for their contract to deliver fire and EMS. Sorry, did someone have a question?
Nope, nope. I think you're good.
So I just wanted to give you an update that that's where we're at with Girdwood Fire, and see if anyone had any questions in regard to what that means, and give you a heads-up that that will be the amount that you'll see on first quarter, or you should see a first quarter budget revision request from Anchorage.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on that? So let's just keep on moving down, I'm guessing you're going to do six B as well. Oh, no, you're not, no. So the question I have on, and I'm looking to see if there's anybody from the administration who can speak to this. Oh, wait, I do have a question before we move on from Mr. Weddleton. Mr. Weddleton?
Well, thanks. Just to thank Jody for working with Girdwood to get that resolved. You know, Girdwood responds outside of their service area quite often, you know, anytime there's a wreck on the highway. So they incur a lot of costs that aren't really appropriate there, you know, for their operation and service area. So, you know, it's nice to, and so this has been a resource spot for them for, you know, several years, so it's nice to have that resolved, so thank you.
You're welcome.
That's great. Okay.
Cameron, a quick question on that.
Yep.
Is the Seward Highway in the Anchorage Fire Safety Area or the EMS Response Safety Area? Chief?
Assemblymember Constant through the chair, yes. Our, the area-wide EMS area is basically border-to-border, so we go all the way down to Ingram Creek, the border with the Kinnip Peninsula Borough. So Girdwood's response area is for EMS, is from about Indian all the way to the Kinnip Peninsula Borough border.
Right, that's slightly different. Girdwood's response area versus the Anchorage Fire Department EMS response area?
So area-wide EMS is the entire municipality, Girdwood is, just covers that area for Anchorage. Basically, it is the responsibility of Anchorage Fire Department, and then we contract with Girdwood and Chugak to deliver in those areas that coincide with their fire service response area.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks. And thanks, 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 Chief. I didn't, I know, we want to have a discussion, for those of you on the call who don't know, both the Anchorage Police Department and the Anchorage Fire Department Chiefs are both, have announced that they are going to retire. And so this was an opportunity for us to talk a little bit about the process of appointing those, and I'm wondering if there's anybody from the administration that can speak to that at this point, and I'm looking to see, is there anybody from the administration that is able to speak to generally what that process is currently? So, and Crystal, you can certainly chime in here, but one of the points that I think was important for us to discuss in the committee, that we've received some questions about, is the role of the public involved in that process. And there's been some requests that, that there be some kind of public process as it relates to the appointment of those. Crystal, did you want to speak to that at all, and to what we're hoping to accomplish on this point?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I think that's actually the question. There has never been a public role in selecting a, either police chief or fire chief in the past that I'm aware of. And because we have had the public come forward and ask about what that process is, we've kind of had to just stop for a minute and reflect as to whether or not there really is one. And as I said, I don't, so the question really is, do we want to somehow create one? And obviously, that would have to be in conjunction with the mayor, whoever that is, who will be making that selection. So the conversation might be a little premature right now, but I think, I think if we were to at least be able to, you know, broach the subject, and then maybe encourage the new mayor to provide some kind of a public process, we could certainly do that. I don't think anybody from the public would be prohibited from sending comments to the mayor in regard to who they think should be the new police chief, or what kind of qualities or characteristics or experience level or whatever a new police chief or fire chief should have. I mean, I think those comments, I'm sure, would be well-received in the mayor's office right now. So anyway, we're really just kind of broaching the whole subject in terms of the idea of public process. And when we first started this, what both you, Mr. Chair, and I were aware of is that the Anchorage School District does have a process for inviting the public into conversations with the appointment or the hiring of a new superintendent. So it's a little bit of a different process, because obviously, that is a board that's making that hiring decision. In this case, it would just be the elected mayor making that actual decision. So again, I think we're just at that preliminary place, and, you know, I apologize if I didn't think to make sure that somebody from the administration was on for this particular question, but I think it would be a good idea to basically make sure that the mayor's office is, is at least somehow in part, in part of this conversation right now, so.
Yeah. Thank you. And Dean Gates would like to speak to this as well, and I would just add that, that I think it's important to begin the discussion as well, and we- And we can certainly have someone from the administration at our next meeting speak directly to, to this. But Dean, would you like to, to speak on this top topic?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, so I wanted to speak just briefly because we adopted an ordinance in December 2019 about the appointment of department heads, like these two fire and police departments. And it's more about though, the assembly's confirmation process. So I can't speak for the administration and the incoming mayor, but they will do in terms of how they will select someone to submit, but when they do select someone for the new fire chief or police chief, our new code process since 2019 is that their mayor is to submit an, an assembly memorandum. And as soon as the clerk receives that, assembly memorandum, and this is in code section 32020B, as soon as the municipal clerk receives that assembly memorandum, there's a process in AMC 23095 about the confirmation procedure. The clerk is to schedule a work session within 10 days of receiving that memorandum. And so I think that, you know, as your elected representatives of your districts, you might hear from constituents about who's being proposed to be the new chiefs before the work session and at the work session, which is open to the public to watch and observe, not necessarily to participate, but the members can ask questions and so forth. So again, that's process is set out in section 23095. And I just wanted to draw your attention to it now. And I guess next time we might hear from someone in the administration about how they start the process and selection.
Thanks very much, Dean. That, that was really helpful. It looks like we have a question or a comment from Mr. Rivera.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I appreciate Dean sharing that code section that was amended. You know, I think in particular, what the co-chairs are talking about is something probably beyond the scope of that particular code provision. And this would really be something that if the assembly were to do anything, we would ask the administration to do this, particularly because in my opinion, I think this, this was a separation of powers issues. But we would ask the administration and, you know, partner with them possibly to have a more robust public process. And, you know, what that looks like, I look to the city of Fairbanks as an example, where Fairbanks announced that they had five or six possible applicants for their police chief that, I don't know exactly how the process works, but assuming that the mayor had these five or six applicants and they did a public forum where they did questions and answer, and then from there, you know, the, the mayor made a decision, I'm making some assumptions. But, but that could be something that we emulate here. And I think, especially in light of a lot of the discussions that happened in 2020, I think it's worth considering. But of course, going back to what Ms. Kennedy stated earlier, obviously, this is all going to be contingent on the new administration, but perhaps at least lining ourselves up to be ready to have that conversation with the new administration would be helpful. That's it. Also want to note that Mr. Bakinsad has joined the meeting, so he might be able to add something from the administration's perspective. Thanks.
Great, thanks. Mr. Constat, you, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, thank you. This whole area of conversation, I think, is highly and potentially inflammatory. I've been following the Fairbanks conversation and it hasn't been particularly robust or healthy for the community. And so I come in with a skeptic's hat and I look forward to the conversation and I have to leave the meeting for another one right now.
Thanks very much. And just before we move on to another top topic, Mr. Bakinsad, would, do you want to share any information related to this conversation around the role of the public involved in the selection of a new police chief and fire, fire chief?
I don't have anything to add right now. I, I missed almost all of the conversation, so I don't want to comment on something that I haven't been a part of the conversation, but happy to have a discussion about it.
Okay, great. Well, we'll, we'll follow up with, with you and the mayor following this and have, have some, some conversation about what, what we want to bring to our next meeting to, to make sure that we're, we're continuing to think about what this might, might look like move, moving forward and what role the assembly and/or the, the pub, public may have in the, in the selection process. Okay, so let's move on to our next topic. And actually, I'm going to hand it over to, to my co-chair to introduce this. This is item 6C, proposed THC increase in edibles. Ms. Kennedy, do you want to start this, this, this conversation?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair. Really, this, this came out for the fact that it's on our agenda. This is an item that was brought to our attention from the state, from the alcohol marijuana, admit it, well, from the AMCO, sorry, too distracted here. But the idea is that they, the state is considering increasing the THC content in the marijuana edibles. And we had a bit of a conversation about it from the, in the Community and Economic Development Committee, but I think what stood out at that was a couple of things. One was the fact that typically, a lot of our departments in, within the municipality are not necessarily given notification of certain things like that, changes in codes, particularly with marijuana, when, when they're being suggested to be changed. And so I went ahead and notified a couple of our departments about these potential changes and asked them for their opinion on it. And we did have the Anchorage Police Department, as well as the Health Department, comment on their thoughts on what this could present to the community in terms of public safety or public health hazards and concerns. And I think the Anchorage Fire Department had a little, had some information as well that could be a part of this conversation, and so we could probably hear from that. But the big question is, with this increase, is this something that we wanted to comment to AMCO and express to them our sentiments about it, whether we support or oppose this increase? And so it's just basically now come before this committee, which is a committee of the whole, and we can discuss whether or not we would like to see a formal comment go forward to the Marijuana Control Board in regard to this change in, in state statute. So that's really kind of the conversation. For the most part, we've had a bit of this conversation already because I also brought forth a resolution in regard to the same thing. So it's on our list just because it obviously touches within public safety realm. I'm pretty sure we have people both from the Health Department and from the Anchorage Police Department that have already made specific comments on this. I think that's another thing worth noting is that they have made comments saying that they oppose this change. The Anchorage Health Department actually formulated a policy statement in opposition to it. And I certainly wanted to make sure that that got on the record and that was part of why I brought it forth as a resolution last week. But anyway, this committee can decide if they're willing to change their mind from any of the sentiments that we had at the assembly meeting, or if this is just going to basically go forward from a personal level, from anybody that wants to comment to the state about this particular change in the marijuana code. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I, and I, I think it's, it's, from the, from the lens of a public safety issue, it's valuable that this committee, you know, be, be aware of it. It, it was brought forth to, to the full body and, and in terms of a, of a, of a resolution to, to, to oppose it was, was, was not moved forward. But I would like to just create a little bit of space if anybody from either this, this committee would like to speak on this further, or if, if someone from APD or the Health Department has any additional comments in terms of the potential health risks involved in this, in this change. So let's just start with, if, if someone from the Police Department, do you, would you like to share any comments on this further beyond what, 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 what we've already heard?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. This is Justin and I don't think we have anything to add.
Okay, thanks. And, and is there someone on from the Health Department as well? Don't see anyone at this point. Okay. And, and then just mem, mem, members, again, this has been discussed, but are there any members who have any additional comments or thoughts on this? Okay. Oh, I see Sarah. Yes, Sarah, would you like to speak on this?
Um, I just wanted to share, this is an estimate of what our numbers are for OUIs. APD may have more precise numbers, I'm not sure. But we would estimate that about half of our drug OUIs are pot alone OUIs. And so obviously, it's quite possible that if, if strength goes up, then we could get more of those. Or not, I can't predict the future, but I just wanted to share that about half of our drug OUIs are pot as opposed to other things like methamphetamines or opiates. Thanks.
Thanks. And just, just for the record, could you define OUI for us?
Sorry, of course, operating under the influence, otherwise known as a DUI or a DWI.
Thanks very much. Okay. Great, thanks for that, that addition. I appreciate it. And I think that this, that this committee will, will continue to monitor this. I think knowing that our Health Department, our Department of Law, and also our Police Department have voiced, you know, at least some can, can concern or a great deal of concern depending on, on, on this change, it's something that we're going to keep our eyes on and monitor pretty closely. Okay, not seeing any additional comments on, on that, that topic. I'm going to move on to our first quarter budget revisions. These, these are coming relatively soon and, and this is a space for members of this committee to bring forward things, things that they're, they're working on, ideas they have, and this is the space to discuss potential quarter one budget revisions. So this is the time to talk about those. And I see Ms. Kennedy.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I would, didn't mean to actually interrupt, but I had my, that was in the queue for, or in the chat for the last session.
Okay, yeah, yeah, great.
And I just wanted to point out that we did hear from those departments in the municipality. I do not believe that they have forwarded their comments specifically to AMCO. I think what, I think I, what my intent was that we would kind of gather those comments and then send them in from the municipality as a whole. I mean, there's nothing that keeps the Health Department or Anchorage Fire or Anchorage Police or the Law Department from sending in their comments individually, but the idea was to take all of those different departments, especially since they were pretty unanimous in what they were, how they were opposing the change. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that everybody also understood that those comments are due in to the AMCO, to, to the board before, I think the deadline is actually March 5th, so that would be Friday. So, and they will take comments after that, but if you want to have them included in their official collection of comments, that the deadline would be Friday. Thank you.
Great. So we would encourage those departments, if they so wish, to submit those by that timeline.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Great. Okay, so I'm going to open up space at this point. Are there members of this committee that are intending on bringing forth first quarter budget revisions related to public safety? And if, if so, this is an opportunity for you to bring that forward to make the, the whole committee aware of it and for any discussion on that at this point. So I'll look for members in the queue to bring forth any, any of those. Ms. LaFrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So mostly, I just want to raise this as a consideration. The body cameras and related IT upgrades are on the ballot for a possible levy or funding through a levy. And in the event that doesn't pass, a commitment has been made to bring those cameras online by the end of the year. And in terms of timing, you know, there would need to be obviously an alternate funding source identified. So I just wanted to flag that and put that out there. Thanks.
Thanks. Great, that, that was on my list as well. So that's, that's great. Any other comments or additions related to first quarter budget revisions from the Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. That doesn't look like we have any old business at this point, so we're going to move into audience per participation. Just as a reminder, you'll have three minutes, so I'll set a little, a little timer, so you'll hear a, a dinging sound when your time is up. And we'll just do it sort of first come, first served. And if you are on the phone, I believe if it's star six to unmute yourself. So I'll just sort of take them one at a time. Would someone from the, the public like to get us started? And if so, you would please to share your name and then after you share your name, I'll start your time.
Hello?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Yes, okay, I'm saving my timer. This, you can call Haverman there. I was thinking, not speaking at all for this meeting, but when you talked about the process in the hiring of a police chief, what appropriate time for me to speak? You need to connect with the people before, before the appointment of a police chief. And the past history, both like in the Health Department, you kept the public distant when you decided on the appointment of a police chief. And when I say, uh, distant, let's take the example of the Health Department, a position appointment. The one chance the public had to speak verbally was when it was put on the agenda, and if you were lucky to speak on the initial audience participation, you could verbally speak on it, but that's very few people. Then the idea among the assembly and others is the idea is, well, we can hear from the public by sending in, they can send us comments. And that's not the way to go. And I'd like to remind you of the way the city of Palmer handles certain types of appointments, like for example, the hiring of the, um, city ma, the manager or their attorneys, they have, they interview these parties in the, in the, in a public meeting and, and there's ability for the public to comment. And if you don't go that direction, I'm really concerned, particularly what has happened in the year 2020 with the concerns about the operations of police departments around the country. This is a time to correct the situation, also correct the position on how you appoint people and how the public's engaged, not just the police chief or the fire chief, but the appointment of leading heads of departments in the municipality of Anchorage. And I'll close with that comment with one minute and 10 seconds to spare. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just, I don't know if you shared your name for the record when you started.
Okay, okay, I turn myself back mute, unmute again. You can call Haverman to follow the public process. When the public process is unappropriately, the decision made by the governing body is more likely to public interest. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Would, would someone else from the public like to speak at this point? And remember, if you're on the phone, it's star six to take yourself off of mute.
Hi, can you hear me?
We sure can. Go ahead and share, you share your name and, and I'll start your time.
Great. Hi, my name is Emily Kloc, the last name is K-L-O-C, and I actually live in your district, Assemblymember Perez Rodeo.
Yeah.
I'm also calling in regards to having a public process for input on the police chief in particular. I really appreciate that you're mentioning, we could have someone at the next administration come to the next meeting. I think that's incredibly important. First of all, just for us to understand the process and also to know and shape with the public what that process could look like. I am grateful for Assemblymember Rivera's comments saying that I think we can look to fair I am grateful for Assemblyman Rivera's comments saying that I think we can look to Fairbanks as an example. There are many people who have been involved in that process. And I think learning from that is, um, something that we could do here in Anchorage. It's, as Assembly Member, um, Constant said, it's, it can be a contentious process, but I, I believe that's why it's actually incredibly important to do that work beforehand. As many people are mentioning, we have seen so many cases over the years of police abuse. And we need to be sure that as we're setting up the department, that the public has a role in this process. And I think having the p, public part before the police chief is hired is a good way of making sure we have those difficult conversations upfront. And that we all come to a good agreement and feel confident in building a good relationship between the public and the new police chief. So I appreciate that we'll be talking about this again at the next meeting and I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thank you very much. And then thank you for reaching out to both Member Kennedy and myself and, and, uh, your reach out was a big reason we put it on the, the, the agenda today. And, and, uh, and so it, it's important to remember that, that calling us and contacting us works. So, um, uh, we're, we're looking forward to continuing this, this conversation. So thanks.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Uh, would anybody else like to, from, from, from the public to, to speak at this point? So, uh, you can take yourself off of mute, doing star six and share your name and I'll start your time.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
Hi. Hi, I'm Celeste Hodge-Groudon, so I'd like an opportunity to speak.
Yes, please.
Okay, um, I am, as I shared already, Celeste, and I'm the president of the Alaska Black Caucus. We're a nonprofit organization that advocates for the rights of black people in the areas of health, economics, justice, and education. And I too would like to go on record as urging support for community input, community engagement, inclusion, that's all we want. We want to be able to share. We want to be able to be included. We believe not only, um, in, in voicing our support or concerns or issues as it relates to a new chief of police, but in everything that the city does. I mean, uh, especially when it involves, um, communicating with our community members. And I, I also want to share that we would love to have, and we need to have, input as it relates to policy surrounding body cameras. And so, um, I, I also want to share Happy Women's History Month. I understand that our chief for the Fire Department is retiring. She has done a fabulous job as a female and I am sorry to see her go. Um, I just think it's important that we recognize the accomplishments of women because unfortunately that's so often overlooked. And so I just wanted to share that, that, that there needs to be community input. We need to engage with our representatives, um, and, and especially when it involves things that really have an effect on our communities. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Celeste. And I, I caught you on the radio the other day and you did a fantastic job. And thank you for your continued advocacy and voice in all matters for our community. So thanks for, for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, um, would anyone else like from, from, from the public like to speak at this time? We have a few more minutes. And just as a reminder, you take yourself off of mute by star six. Okay. I don't hear anybody else. Uh, so with that, I just want to thank everybody for your time. This was a great meeting. And I appreciate all, oh, yes. I heard, I heard, I heard someone speak. Nope. Okay. With that, just want to thank everybody for their time. Thank you for, for the presentations. And, uh, this meeting is now adjourned. Have, have a great day, everybody.